All right, Craig, if you could start by, can you see the screen?
I can, yes.
All right, whenever you're ready.
Okay, so this is eight twelve twenty twenty five hearing. I'm calling this Bay Village Historic District Commission Public Hearing to Order at four P M on Tuesday, August twelfth, twenty twenty five. Commissioners present are.
And I can read that for you. It's Craig Douglas, Catherine Secory Nelson, and Laura Shea.
Thank you. In accordance with Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, including the March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three legislation extending the suspension of these provisions until June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Bay Village Historic District Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via Zoom meeting platform or email staff at bayvillageeac at boston dot gov. We will repeat these instructions throughout the hearing.
Great, thank you, Craig.
Yeah.
All right, our first order of business on the agenda will be the ratification of the June tenth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to read those?
Yes.
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 Okay, great. So Craig, do you want to ask for a motion to accept those minutes?
Yes, could I get a motion to accept the minutes from the previous meeting?
Motion to accept the minutes.
Can I get a second?
I can second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Great, good, thank you. All right, so we have one administrative review application, and that's application twenty five point zero zero five three B V eighteen Shawmit Street. Actually, I think it's twenty six point zero zero five three B V eighteen Shawmit Street at Front Facade Repoint and Repair Masonry. And staff has confirmed that the proposed work is compliant with the design guidelines and recommends approval. So if someone would like to make, unless there are any questions, if someone would like to make a motion to approve the administrative application.
Can I get a motion to approve the administrative application?
Motion to approve eighteen Shawmit Street application.
Can I get a second?
I can second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Good, thank you. We're getting a lot done.
Nice.
All right. So our next and primary order of business on the agenda is an advisory review for application twenty six point zero zero one zero B V one thirty eight Arlington Street. Demolition of an existing building and construction of a new residential building. And I will say, this will be the first project that we are reviewing with our new design guidelines for new construction. So we did send out some staff comments. This project does include the demolition of the existing building on the corner of Melrose Street and Arlington Street. Staff is supportive of the demolition of the building. We believe the history is that it was probably built sometime around the nineteen thirties and restuccoed into its current stucco finish. You know, it's unusual to approve demolitions in historic districts, but in this case, staff felt that it was appropriate. And then you will be taking a look at the proposed design. We have had a staff review of the project. We gave some feedback on specifically relating the building's facade to Melrose Street, to the existing building next door. Some revisions to the roof, including the omission of an arched window for a dormer and a clear transition from the building on Melrose Street to the new building. For an advisory review, the commission does not vote. This is just an opportunity for commission members to provide feedback to the applicant. Hopefully they get them in line, hopefully get a little feedback. Yeah, okay. Hopefully get them in good order to come back to the commission for a design review for an approvable project. So Anthony, will you be presenting?
Yes, Larry, you wanted to, Larry. Just as we suggested when we met informally with staff, this is the smallest project any of the three of us have ever worked on. And the combined years in the real estate world for Steve, Tony Pizzani and myself probably approaches a hundred and fifty. And this is a very small project. And we're trying to do the very best we can with a posted stamp. And I think we've come up with a good design.
Great. And Larry, before we start, would you give your full name and the
Oh, sure.
The full name of all your team members, please.
Yeah, for the record, Lawrence, as Dakara, one seventy five Federal Street, Boston, Anthony Pizzani is our attorney, and Steve Cohen and Josh. He's our architect, okay. Sound like the guy on TV, the guy on radio. I'm not the attorney. I don't even like him, right? So and Steve Cohen and Josh Cohen are the owners of the property.
Great, thank you. So Anthony, whenever you'd like to.
Yes, thank you. The project is located at the corner of Arlington and Melrose Street. I have two maps from Bromley Maps, simply to show a little bit of what the history is. During the eighteen eighties, the it was known as Ferdinand Street until nineteen thirties, when it became known as the Arlington Streets. There was the extension. And the reason that our site is shaped the way it is, that in the early, in the thirties, they widened, got rid of Ferdinand Street and widened, widened Arlington Street. Our site at the corner is three hundred and forty eight square feet. And these, these pictures are pictures of the existing condition. You can see that there was a building adjacent to it known as sixty six Melrose Streets that was taken down. This building, the small small building, small building, the existing building, the site is three hundred and fifty square feet. The existing building has a square footage of two hundred and ninety one square feet. As, as was mentioned, it has had various uses over the years. Last known use was, I believe, a barber shop or something pretending to be that. The building is adjacent to what was the former church. The church originally started out as an Episcopalian I don't want to say Unitarian, but Ukrainian church. It went through a number of iterations. It became a Catholic church, became a Greek church, and it was deconcentrated, consecrated during the nineteen fifties. It then went to become a recording studio. It was a recording studio for approximately thirty, thirty to forty years. It was sold to Lenny Schneiderman in nineteen ninety seven. And we actually did the renovation of that building during the early two thousands. The, and, okay, this is simply the site plan. And again, it's three hundred and fifty square feet. It starts, its widest point is fourteen feet on Melrose. And it goes down to two and a half feet further down. It is adjacent to sixty two Melrose, which is owned by the Coens also. This is a series of existing series of plans of the building, and what we're proposing is a four-story building that with an average square footage per floor of two hundred and nine, two hundred and seventy two square feet. As I mentioned, the existing plan of the ground floor is two hundred and ninety one. The reason we lose square footage is, you'll see as we get through the project, due to the circulation that's required. And you can see here, we have a circular stair. You enter, by the way. One of the issues before zoning that we received zoning relief law was that the front door is actually not directly on Arlington Street, even though the address is one thirty eight Arlington. We were granted permission to have the door in that location. As you enter at that point, and it's a split entry, you go up and down, go down to the living area, living room area, and on, and slightly up to the kitchen area. And then from that point on, there's a series of connecting rooms and balconies utilizing a circular stair. We also, in order to create adequate usable space, have overhung Arlington Street. And we go from zero to three feet with an average overhang of one point five feet in two locations, in this location and that look, and the this location. The section, I think, gives you a better idea as to what's actually happening. Again, the entry point is at at grade. You go down into the living room area, slightly up to the kitchen dining, and at that point, pick up the circular stair. So we have a three-bedroom, three-bath with an occasional fourth bedroom on the ground floor utilized for guests, et cetera. Again, this is a series of elevations relative to the Arlington Street sign. And the elevations for Melrose, a series of perspective drawings were very mindful of matching the bricks, the coursing strongly along the ground floor. Next one. Next one. And up up along this side to go tie into, again, Melrose. We recognize the fact that there's a a change in material we're utilizing at the bays to show that it belongs to the faster corridor, shall we say, of Arlington Street, and yet wraps around the corner to Melrose. We're mindful of maintaining the roof lines pitches along continuation of the roof along Melrose and goes back along and continuation of the dormer on the backside. When we met with the group on earlier this week, we originally had a circular bay window that was taking its clue from the church. We have gone through the new guidelines, which discourages things like that. So we are now putting in a standard, a more standardized dormer, shall we say. Right, as you can see, the dormer has been, originally, we had it as, as a round, rounded form. And part of that was because this elevation is on access, directly on access to Isabella Street. So we thought that we would make a reference. We have since gone back on that, obviously. One of the issues also is the building location, entrance location. This is the entrance off the which would, in some respects, be considered the side. We also wouldn't be providing a stone wall and metal and steel fencing, coincident with the requirements of your new guidelines. We recognize the fact that the windows are slightly different shaped from what you're normally used to on the main facade, and we have minimized the window penetrations on the Melrose Street. Yeah, get that. On the Melrose Street, we've we are enforcing the lines of the fenestration. They are simply shaped a little bit differently. The upper material we're proposing is metal panel, a Luccabond or equal. The roof area, we would use the scalloped. Actually, we'd be using the faux, 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 F A U X, scallop shingles at the roof. We have lower windows that allow light down into what would be the living room area, which is consistent, again, with the lower windows that are matching along Melrose Street.
Anthony, could you pause there a minute and just, just be clear and show here with your cursor where the existing Melrose Street building is and where the new building? Because I think that was confusing to some people earlier at a staff.
Yes, this is the existing Melrose Street building. And at this line, we can show, we have an architectural elevation. Let me go to that. Yeah, okay. This is the existing Melrose Building, again, number sixty two, that is owned by the Coens. Our building butts up to it. That dimension is fourteen feet. When we were here last time, we had a gap between the roofs to emphasize the difference. We have since closed that, that off. And the roof line and window alignment is now consistent with, with your new guidelines. So we are matching as best as possible. We're in conversation with consolidated brick to see what we can do to get a brick that is close to what the existing is. Again, the ground floor runs continuous brick all the way across. The vertical dimensions are aligned, are in alignment, our overhang aligns with the entrance and the windows. The elevation windows are in, in this drawing, again, this is a drawing that was done earlier on the perspective elevation. It shows that that we changed the windows so that the windows and everything else are in alignment. Again, the material goes from brick to metal on the second and third floor, and then is a play on the scallop on, on the roof structure. Does that help clarify? One of the issues, by the way, that's of importance is that this is the end view of our building. There is the existing lower level of number sixty two, which is the same as many of the buildings on Melrose Street. And we are providing a circular stair that provides egress out of that area. So should there be a fire, because what has happened now, everything has been closed off. And that would provide the egress. Emergency egress. Which one? Okay, back to the give me yeah, okay. So here again, and we recognize the fact that it is slightly different than anything else on the street. Given the best of all worlds, the bays would ideally have been glassed, but it makes it difficult to do that when you have, this is the bathroom, and the, and the, these are bedrooms. So and we, we took a look initially at what would happen if we did the bays in brick, and it was pretty unsatisfactory. So we decided that a better material would be a new material representative of what's going on in the rest. And have elected to propose a metal, metal finish. Again, generic name, a Luccabond, but since I'll apply, there's, there's a ton of be happy to take any questions.
All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
Can you go back to the plans again?
Surely. Again, this, this would be the ground, ground level. The entrance at one thirty eight Arlington Street, half a level down, half a level up. Bedrooms in this location, bathrooms in this location, circulation stairs in, in, in the center. Again, one of the issues is that we wanted to bring as much light as we could and use the fenestration at the stair in order to, to achieve that.
Now, is there a fourth floor?
Yes, there is.
And the that's that one.
This, this is the fourth floor. So there's a four, three, two, one, lower level. Living kitchens, bedrooms, 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 bath, 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 circulation. Storage underneath the stair. As I, as I mentioned, the existing ground floor is two hundred and ninety one square feet. Average floor is actually two seventy two. And you can see, one of the reasons for that is that we lose space by having just air.
Right. And the reason you're pushing the dormers out is to protect floor area on the fourth floor rather than matching the way the dormers are on the neighboring building?
The the, the reason that we pushed the, the door from this side to that side.
Yeah, no, not, not the door. I'm talking about the dormer windows on the fourth floor.
The dormer windows on the fourth floor. This is what we had originally proposed, which is not a dormer. We've now changed that into a dormer.
Right, so if you go to the rendering, the one that's from the corner that shows Melrose as well? So the dormers on the Melrose Building are recessed?
No, no, they, they protrude similar to what's actually on the Melrose Building.
They're the opposite.
Okay, your suggestion is that we recess them rather than.
I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, no, we, we, we decided to make it a little bit more prominent.
Where the front door is, you are proposing it now?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Can you point out where the front door is proposed on these renderings?
The front door.
The front door moving.
Front door is proposed here. Think you can see it, see it better there at this point, right here.
Okay, thank you.
And my second question is, is it necessary to have the overhanging bump outs on the second and third floors? I know you have them clad in a nice material, but is it, does it need to be bumped out like that and overhanging the sidewalk?
Well, let's go back to the plan, and I think you'll agree. Let's, let's blow this out of my eyes. A little bit more. Move one, okay. So here we, here we have a, this is the line of the building below. This is the line of the overhang. We have a room that is roughly forty square feet, plus or minus. We can't get a full bath or shower in there. We are constrained trying to maximize the amount of space. It makes sense for the toilet to, to be in this location. It gave us the room to put a, put a shower in. When we tried to do away with that, it became very problematic. And also, on the other side, it constrains the bedroom very much. That's a king-size bed. And there would be the wall of the building, were it not. And this allows, we felt a more light to come in and better use of the interior space.
I guess, the I guess that my, that leads me to a new question is, wouldn't having a bathroom in an overhang like that subject it to freezing in the wintertime?
No, the answer is that, given the new energy code, where basically everything in the walls and ceilings are now R forties or R forty nines, that is, that is not a problem. The average house, the roofs usually were R twenties, okay? You know, we're now dealing with walls that are R forty in order to comply with the new energy code. And we've done overhangs many times with bathrooms and have not had a problem. So we're confident. In older houses, it was a problem because they lacked adequate insulation.
Have these, have these bay windows changed from the August seventh design?
No, the bays, bays have stayed the same. The issue is that the we have, we cut back in the perspective these, these windows in order to assure alignment with everything that was going on on Melrose Street. The bay windows in both areas here and there are exactly the same. That was not changed.
I'll just, I just want to add a little bit from a staff perspective. We took another look at this with a staff level just this afternoon. And, you know, we hope that some further development or exploration into the material of the bay windows. development or exploration into the material of the bay windows um can be done. Um, we may be able to send you some ideas. We, there were some buildings in the South End that had some interesting cladding details that we think um might be helpful here. Um, and again, maybe if we can go to the elevation showing of kind of a straight on from Melrose Street, because you know, there is a good concern that we do want to make sure it is conforming to the building on Melrose Street as much as possible and
Yes, uh, again, as I mentioned, uh, this has not changed since uh we met on the seventh. The perspectives have changed.
And you know, I think, you know, we we still have that blank brick wall there on the first floor and you know, I I'm guessing there's something behind there that doesn't allow for another window to be included.
Actually, uh, well, there's the kitchen behind there, but we we could certainly work on that. Um, yeah, th- there's the kitchen with the cabinets lined lined up there. Um, we we could certainly take a look at introducing another window into the that area. And we could certainly do it down at the lower level as well. Yeah. Well, it makes makes more sense on the ground floor. We have one at the lower level anyway. Uh, in this area, we have the kitchen backing up, but surely it's possible to put a a window in there. I'm not sure we can get the same sill height. We can get the same head height, obviously. Uh, we can, and if it was, it might end up being a half window, but or i- it's a window that would come to counter height and counter height there would be forty inches.
Well, I think, you know, the key will be trying to have it relate to the Melrose Street building.
Sure, understood.
Um, commissioners, any other comments or?
Um, yes, Joe, I I have maybe two unrelated comments, uh, more forward-looking and backwards-looking one. So one forward-looking as far as uh the open space inside and the light. Given that there is one floor per um, one bedroom per floor, excuse me. Um, and this definitely looks like for a younger family, everybody over a certain age may not want to climb up three floors up to go to the bedroom. Um, my question is how this is adaptable or is it something that was thought already when it comes to elevator, which is a very frequent, I would say, feature inside uh such a, I would say, tall but narrow uh properties, whether on in Bay Village or especially on Beacon Hill. Um, and I wonder if that's something you've been contemplating or that's something that future owners may want to install. Um, so that just again, forward-looking, the one backwards-looking it, that's my personal take. That's not the commissioner view. I honestly prefer the rounded dormer. And Joe, please correct me that I'm very politically incorrect, but that would be more aligned with the build on adjacent to it on Arlington. It gave me more of the feel versus a cookie cutter proposition, but again, that's my personal aesthetic view. It that kind of looks more like an interesting building and then than the other one. So that again, that's my personal preference uh from from where the street, that block of Arlington is. That's how I was looking at it.
Good. No, that's a good perspective. Thank you.
So I, Joe, I agree with what you said relative to the staff's comments that I would like to see if there's a more traditional approach to the bay windows themselves. And I would also offer that on the Melrose side, does the, does it even need to have a bay on that side? You know, we have it projected. It's at the bedrooms, behind the bedroom wall, but you could see, you could see a version where the Melrose side is all brick with smaller windows that match the building next to it, you know, as as a possible alternative. Um, but I guess I would just I agree with with the staff's comments relative to the bay windows because there there's a large scale to those compared to the size of the building. And I completely respect that this is a very complex problem, given the the area constraints of the building itself.
Great. Thank you, Craig. Laura, do you have anything else? If not, we could open it up to some public comment if there are members of the public who'd like to speak. All right. So I think I'm just going to share my screen here. So I can bring up my script. All right. Craig, can you see in my screen? It says member of the public?
I can.
Okay, yeah, if you could read that, thank you.
Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please quote, raise your hand unquote in the application via the Zoom meeting platform or email staff at bayvillageeac@boston.gov. We will repeat these instructions throughout the hearing.
All right. Is there any member of the public who'd like to make a comment? Raise your hand. Just going to check my emails here. All right. Well, I'm not seeing any email messages. So um, you know, Anthony and Larry and Steve and Josh will, you know, be happy to, you know, meet with you again on a staff level if you want to go over the comments that you heard today, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, yes, I I think that would be, uh, we need a little bit of time to digest and incorporate the comments.
Okay. All right. Great. Well, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we're
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Welcome. Thank you. We're nearing the end of our hearing, so I wanted to introduce um commissioners. Uh, we have a new addition to our team, Jaclyn Benegas. Jaclyn, you want to say hello? Jaclyn's our new
Hi, everyone. Um, it's a pleasure to meet you all. Um, I know we're missing some commissioners, but nonetheless, really excited to meet everyone on a personal level and work with everyone um as we move through Bay Village. It's a so wonderful district and excited to meet you all. Oh, and just some, for some background, I am the preservation planner um for South End alongside with the other preservation planner. And then I am full-on as well, a preservation planner for St. Patoff and then Bay Village, so.
Great. Thanks, Jackie. Um, other staff updates, we are going to be ruling out a new attendance. Excel spreadsheet for all commissioners, just so we can track when people are planning to be absent, if you're planning to be on vacation or out of town. Um, just to let us know in advance. So we'll be sending that out to everyone, um, just to help us um keep aware of when we are running into danger of not having a quorum of commissioners. So so those are all my comments.
Great. Welcome aboard, Jaclyn.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, Craig, I think you can um adjourn the hearing.
Can I get a motion to adjourn the hearing?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
We may have lost Laura, so I think we can, you can be the second and we can just
Okay, I second it and uh all in favor say aye.
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 All right. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you and welcome, Jackie.
Thank you.